It's six o'clock. I'll turn the meeting over to Todd. And we're going to be discussing a 10-year plan. Go ahead, Todd.
Thank you everyone for coming. Exciting to see a turnout. This is my third town plan update here. There's more people this room tonight than there was the last two town plan process hearings combined. So that's how it is. First and foremost, we have an older version of the town plan that the select board and trustees met jointly with at the Copley Country Club this fall.
It's like the old one.
Yeah. So I wanted to make sure we're all urgent the town plan before that's the select board to make a motion to approve the changes as written. We can still discuss them later so we can all move on to the clean version of the town plan until all working out the same document. So those are the changes that are already agreed to and not agreed to litigate down hearing. You make them, then we're officially working out this document. And you can go back and discuss any of those changes if you'd like. But I'd like to start here so all work to one version of the town plan.
Got it. Do I hear a motion or a guarantee?
So moved.
Motion by Judy, second by Gary. Is there any further discussion? Home favorites say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
So we can still discuss what was in there, but that just means where every one in the room is working off the same version of the plan. Wonderful because there are 18 versions of the plan literally, not exaggerating. We all have the 18th version, so that's a great start. So provide a little bit of, I don't know, the framework for this evening. The planning council has been working on the town plan. I went back at my notes. We first started this in 2018 and really started reworking the chapters in 2019. So really we've been at this for three years. We spent the better part of the last year in public hearings. We had a lot of public inputs, actually a lot more than another time to update the plan, which has been wonderful. And the planning council board, the town plan, and the select board for this hearing. The town plan is a joint plan and also has a village trustee hearing, which will take place on Wednesday, June 8. The town plan for both boards needs two public hearings based on our population size of the statute. And after the second hearing of both boards, the boards can vote on the plan. As a joint plan, the plan that the select board votes to approve ultimately, which will probably be in January or maybe later, has to match with the trustees' approval. So we all have to power in the same direction here, and it's really helpful. For the purposes of the select board changes, the select board can make changes to the plan. They can't rework the entire plan without starting the town plan process over again. So the planning council builds the foundation for the plan, and the select board is really just putting a roof on it. They can make language changes, they can't be substantive in nature. If it's substantive in nature, basically go back to square one and you start all over again, which is okay. The select board may decide to do that. And if you want to make substantial changes and start over, that's a choice of the board or the choice of the trustees. So with that being said, I don't have any other thing to present. I'm happy to just take public comments on the plan and the board so chooses.
I just wanted to kind of reiterate what you said, Todd. I know that the planning council and Todd have spent thousands of hours on this, literally, over the past three years. And I've been seeing a lot of posts on social media about, you know, not liking this or not liking that. But this has been a three-year process, and this is like the 11th hour. And we have, there's been dozens of hearings, there's been lots talked about, and we've come down to this draft that we all like. We may not like everything in it, you know? There may be some minor things we want to change. And we could do that. But like Todd said, if it's anything that's a substantial change, like for instance, changing the zoning in an area, or changing a building to commercial or something like that, that's a substantial change. We can't do that. We'd have to go all the way back to square one and start over. So I just want to remind everybody of that. As I'm, you know, I appreciate our county, our planning council, tremendous amount. They have worked tirelessly on this with lots of input from lots of people. And just wanted to let everybody know that. My plan here tonight is to sort of run the meeting. What we're going to do is we're going to allow public comment for an hour. And it can be, a person can speak for two to three minutes and say their comment. It won't be like a dialogue. We're not going to answer questions. That's not how the hearing works. But you can, you can say your comment. And then if everyone has had a chance to speak, you can speak again. So you can speak two times, up to two times, if there's room, if there's time. And be respectful for every, from everybody. And I'd also like to see everybody, like stand and say your name, where you live, and what your comment is. And if you can do that, everything will go great. But I just wanted to also tell you that what Todd said, you know, I've been here for going on 14 years and never had a room like this over zoning thing. And it's great. It's great. I love the public involvement, you know? I love that part of it. And if there's big things that we have to change, we'll make the change. And the town plan isn't meant to encompass everything that happens in town. I think Todd would agree with that. You can do things that are not on the plan. If there's something that you know of that you think should be in that town plan, you know, it can be done. The town plan is a guideline to go by. It's not, you know, set in stone and you can't add to it, you can't take away from it. It's just the plan of the town for 10 years. And we, you know, it's sort of a moving target in a way, but we try to nail it down for 10 years. So.
Excuse me, Bob.
Yeah.
Kelly.
Oh, Kelly, how are you?
So I just have one question. Is there going to be a forum open where we can ask questions?
That wouldn't be tonight, right?
So you can ask questions.
You can ask questions?
Yeah, public comments or questions. I mean, I'd love.
We can ask questions, but it's not meant to be a dialogue back and forth.
I'm just curious about the dozens of meetings that supposedly were had, because this is the first one I've heard about.
We've worked on how long?
And even nothing with the town plan going on.
Yeah, we've worked on it for.
And I paid pretty close attention to the stuff.
At the end, At the end Hancock is the chair of the planning council, right? And you can, how many meetings have you been talking about the town plan for?
Where? But where? Where were they, where were they put?
Right here.
Where were they put out to the public?
All of our meetings are posted on our website, and all the agendas are.
Kristen, it's been the newspaper, it's been at the post office, the library, the town offices, it's everywhere.
Everybody seen that?
No.
No. Nobody's, people haven't seen that, so you guys are not, huh? You've seen it? Good. Oh, good. I'm glad that there's.
You have a lot of us.
You're trustee.
You're trustee, okay. Well, that, that doesn't really count, but normal people are saying, oh man, you're cool.
I think, I can speak to that too. I think there is some confusion where we, like the town government has said, there have been dozens of meetings, but there haven't been dozens of these type of meetings that were like, where explicitly, like the whole public was invited to comment. I mean, the difference is you can attend any planning council meeting, and there is an opportunity to speak your concerns. And that's what they're referring to when they're saying there have been dozens of meetings. Just so you know, it, there hasn't, there haven't been a bunch of public forums like this.
Okay.
But you're always welcome to attend a town government meeting. And I, having, being new to town government, I agree with you. It is hard, it can be very hard to find and navigate when and where the meetings are.
It is.
And we can take that feedback and try to, and be better about.
The only thing I knew about this meeting was your most.
Oh, great. Cool.
The other thing that you can do is you can always give your email address to Todd, and he'd send you agendas or send you. But, you know, getting involved is great. You know, I appreciate that.
If we could please, MA TV has asked the folks when they want to speak in particular speaker, because we're out of the loud room, the accusations are not wonderful in here.
Yeah.
In order to capture the dialogue clearly, it looks, come up on the microphone.
Todd, microphone.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, Kathy.
Kathy Chafee, 70th Park Avenue. So I don't know if you kind of know where to begin, but, so I have to like disagree on your public, putting out public for meetings. And maybe going forward, you can be more in detail, because if I had seen a meeting for this access road, that's already been named Alexander Road for access, I definitely would have been to every one of them. Now, I might not have changed anybody's mind, and I'm getting to the age where I'm not playing you guys, but I do feel that I should have been involved in those meetings, because you're coming how far from my property? You go out 10 feet from my property line putting that road in? Or is that road going right on my property line? And this.
Sorry, can you refer to the page number so we're all literally on the same page? Okay, thank you.
Thirty-seven. This doesn't do me anything at all. I can't see where anything's going to happen a foot from my property line or 10 feet from my property line. And I'm not even saying it's going to happen yet, but nobody said anything to me. And I think one more, when you do things like this in the village where the property is very small, that you should at least include people adjoining property owners. I mean, this is a shock to me. I'm totally shocked. I can't even believe it. I mean, and you're not going to change your mind because you already named it. The baby's been born. You don't name a baby until it's born, and this baby's been born.
Can you comment on that one, on that particular?
This is, so the, the language Ms. Chafee's talking about is trying to solve the traffic issue that happens every morning and sometimes in the afternoon when school's getting in and getting out, where everyone who lives up by Oremo Mountain Road, Elmore Road, that whole area, Maple Street, has to cycle down in front of the fire station, back up and go back up Copley Avenue. So the school was presented with multiple options of ways.
See, I would like to know those multiple options. I have, I feel I have a right to know what those options were. Whether you accept any of them or not, I still feel I have a right to see what those options were.
Give me a second, I'll talk about them.
Okay.
So the school was presented with multiple options in the draft chapter, and the school largely wrote their, the education chapter. That's from the, the school board and their staff. So the options were to come multiple ways to the property. On Trips Corner, there's a right-of-way further up. There's the one that the school chose here because it's the shortest and it's the flattest and it's the most cost-effective, and you're not dealing with significant grades. So the intent here is, and there's no, to allay some of your concerns, there's no construction planned, there's no right-of-way given, this is private property, there's no guarantee any of this would ever happen. It just basically says, hey, we have a traffic problem that cycles around the fire station. We'd like to solve it. This is the most economical way to solve it in the most cost-friendly manner, so people can actually not have to cycle to the fire station. They could come off the end of Maple Street, cut right through like the kids do right now. Most of the kids from the area walk almost the exact path and go up to the school. This would allow powers to do it too, to solve the traffic problem at the fire station, that intersection of 12 and 15A and Copley Ave.
But so, but in your plan, you have one to two years. So that's very confusing to property owners. When you go back to your back page, you have one to two years to have that totally done.
That's to work on it. I think you're misunderstanding. The plan is an aspirational document, it's things we'd love to do. There's no guarantee the town will get this right away, will have the money to purchase this right away. Existing property owner could say, no, this was the school's choice of where they wanted to come in, it makes the most economical sense, that's why it's in the plan. So the plan is basically saying, hey, there's a traffic problem at 8:00 AM, it's really hard to get through the intersection of 15A, 12, Copley Ave. And most of it's caused by traffic coming from the east, cycling through by the fire station up to Copley Ave. There's another way to do that that would solve the problem at the intersection. The plan also talks about Darling Road, for example. If Darling Road were to be a through road, people could come through Darling Road and get to the elementary school that way, even though it's a through road on paper, it's never been built.
The one, the one that is viable, is the most viable from the school standpoint, that they could do because they own the property, is the one that goes through by Trips.
Well, yeah.
Because they own that, and that's their own piece of land.
So maybe I need to go to the school board, but really, I've lived there for 19 years. So if you want to know anybody that knows about the traffic problem, it's me. I mean, I change my work hours, so I don't have to leave in that time.
Right.
And I see all kinds of things. So when it comes to that time, I really think you should involve the people that live on that road, that are involved in that every day. In that little, I mean, I'm probably going ahead, but there's so many options, and I don't know what your options have been, because nobody has told me.
This is what the school board chose.
Okay, so I'll go to the school board.
No one in this room made this decision, yes.
But I'll go to the school board too, because there's so many other, there's so many other options, you know? Maybe a one-way in and then one-way out, so you're not doing three, three rows into one.
Right.
But you really need to, there's a lot of options. I mean, I've thought about it for 19 years, so I.
Yeah.
And anything you do there is not going to fix any problem until you have other drop-off points for the high school, because now it's one spot. And you've got to fix that road in front of the fire department, and I hate to say it, but you need to put a roundabout in there so people can go through. The trucks are so big, they take up, they can't.
That's also, that's also in the plan. We need to move on.
You know, I mean, so anyways.
Yeah, we got to move on.
Yeah, I, yeah, my two minutes. But okay, thank you for listening, and please put me on if you're still on the board, whatever. I really would like a phone call.
Yes.
Or a letter that you're going to meet on this situation. And, you know, Mr. Fishel should too, and, you know, anybody that's up that road. Because I know we have a lot of good suggestions, whether you listen to them or not, but we should be able to voice our opinion.
Thank you, Kathy.
I believe Tracy owns the right-of-ways you're talking about.
She does.
The school negotiated whether at some point.
The school owns a 25-foot piece, but Tracy was willing to beat over enough for a 50-foot, as it is right now, it could be a one-way, like a one-way end drop-off.
A drop-off.
I know this, yeah.
Trips or?
I served on a capital project committee up there, that's why I'm familiar with it. And I know that that is something they could do because they own the property and then Tracy was going to.
Right. And you know, up there, it should be, up, it should be a circular driveway.
Yeah.
Walkways to one school, walkway to the other, they turn around, they come and they go.
Yeah. I know when, this is kind of memories, but my dad used to tell me that's how he used to go to school. He'd drive in there, you could drive in there in 1955.
Right.
You know, and that was part of the school entry, but that's a long time ago.
Okay, thank you.
Next public comment?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah. Please. We're starting, we're using a timer now, we got, kind of got behind on that.
My name is Hillary Warner, I live on Hollis Street. I want to thank Todd and the planning council for their work on the plan. I took the opportunity to provide some input and ideas in the spring to get it put on the front porch forums, or I read version 12 or whatever it was at that time. I'm grateful for how enthusiastically my presentation was received. I have three comments. The first one is that I love the high-density downtown area housing. I'm sure that homeowners who are affected by the various projects have my sympathy, and at the same time, I think it all makes a lot of sense. My second comment is that on page 46, the plan encouraged the council to live into this check floor using wood for heating purposes. I'm concerned about encouraging the use of wood for heating in dense, mupulated areas because as it is now, sometimes when I walk to work from work, the air quality around some homes that are burning wood is so poor that I have to put my bitten over my nose on a filter. I fear that if wood burning increased in the village, it would become, could become a significant air quality problem. If we're going to encourage anything related to wood burning, I would suggest that it would be replaced in efficient wood burning appliances, but more efficient ones. And my third comment has to do with open space and non-motorized recreation, with the decline in agricultural use of land and increased interest of people moving to the area. I believe it's imperative that we combine public and private interest to protect more areas for outdoor enjoyment before it's too late. I've spoken about an absentee close prostitute gear walker and lover of the outdoors. I looked at hardwood professionally designed 11-mile trail network behind St. Louis High School on my end of the town, targeting electric and private landowners. I also looked at Mont Piller, which is currently looking to add 80 acres to its centrally located Hubbard Park. Calis, which has 14 miles of trails entirely on private land, for voluntary year-to-year agreements with landowners. And East Mont Piller, which has 15 miles of trails on private and protected land with a goal of connecting with community and its schools and neighborhoods. The Morris Town Sound Forest and its trails are lovely, but it's a 15-minute drive and some of the trails are quite difficult. The best opportunity I see for something of this nature would be to connect the existing trails on school property, the land to the east, by more water and light. I'm not sure if that's a substantive change to the plan, but I just wanted to throw that out there as an possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you, you had your third point, was it in the plan already, or was it just something we're adding?
We talk about trails in there, but connecting out through water and light is something that's in line with what's already doing. I wouldn't consider that a substantive change. So that's something that we could massage and add for the January hearing. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am. Let's introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Andrews. I live on Vannet's Road. As was already acknowledged, town plans are an enormous document that takes a ton of work, as I'm sure Todd and his support staff know, as well as the planning division and the board. I'm here tonight representing the Morrisville Conservation Commission to recommend to you the inclusion of the support of a conservation fund in our town plan. There are now over 62 towns in our state and counting that have one. A conservation fund is a strategy used to protect natural resources. And as you can see, if you have a plan with you, on page two is down the bottom, it is stated that a need for more recreational land, as previous citizens who just spoke also spoke about, it's a need for more recreational land as well as to protect buffers along getlands, rivers, falls, et cetera. So a conservation fund would include support for wildlife inventories, natural resource inventories, community events for education, and the gathering of information from the public in our town. It would leverage the availability for other funding we will need as we engage and focus on local conservation priorities. Would be a fund that would enable us to move quickly on projects that needed immediate action. It would allow us to partner with other land trusts, landowners, state-led grants like the Land and Water Conservation Fund, ANI Water Jet Grants, and other foundations such as the Federal Community Forest Program and Forest Legacy. So as you can see, this fund would be used for our town's interests in preserving and protecting Morris Town's natural resources and much-needed recreational areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone wants a town plan, give them a copy.
Jennifer, I wanted to respond to you. I was thinking along those lines, I love the idea of having a fund started, and we actually have a source of funds within the town already that we haven't, haven't used in a long time. Erica was talking about the Morris Town Development Fund. I know we've talked about using it for different things. Morris Town Development Fund is a fund that we give low-interest loans as a source of gap funding to businesses that want to get established, but we haven't had any for a long, long time, any, you know, applications or anything that became real. And we have a substantial amount of money in that fund. And I would love to see if, you know, some of that deferred to that fund. It would be great. We've talked amongst the MDF board about finding something just like that, to create something like that.
I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah.
I think a conservation fund is a very specific kind of fund that is recognized by other bigger funding sources, and I think it is really prudent for our town to have one, so that when things come up, we have the bigger funders recognize that we have made commitment in Morrisville to.
Right. Like if, if a piece of property comes available next to the town forest or something, we could buy it, or we could, you know, have closer means to buy it. I like that.
So you're also saying it would allow us to leverage funding if we have proof that we're invested in that.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Amber. Who else would like to speak? Go ahead, Kristen.
This is Conny. I live on Tarrant Street, and I'm here representing the Morrisville Conservation Commission. I'm disappointed to see that I don't see the steep slope language included that was removed during the previous session between the trustees and select board members. Am I mistaken that it's not included in this one?
That's what they have the first one through, they adopted the second one, so we can work off the same plan, but doesn't mean they couldn't talk about it and potentially direct me or the planning council to add it back in. So you're free to talk about it.
I would like to talk about it and bring it back to your attention. I have brought in the maps that I had given to Ann Jeffs. He like passes it around.
Could you tell, could you also go back to the, do you know what page you're on?
I don't know what page it is anymore because it's no longer in there.
Old one, or 30 and 31?
Yeah, we have it, we have it right here, Kristen, 40.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't bring my old copies.
It's okay. I have 18 of them.
So thank you. I have a few of them myself. So what I have also put on your desk is every other town in the loyal counties, steep slope language, as support that it is, and there is a copy of that for each of you, if you'd like that to come around. You'll see that they reflect different levels of restriction and definition or regulation or, but each includes steep slope language as an important natural resource that we should protect or consider valuable for everyone that lives in town. It adds property value to protect them by increasing our use. It also adds to the ecological function, says wildlife corridors, and reduces stream pollution through production of erosion, waters like sediments through erosion. The steeper a hill is, the faster water moves down it. Water moves downhill and carries sediment, which causes erosion. It's not complex, it is important. I'd like you to please include the steep slope language, that just is a definition of what steep slope is, and also that anything over 25% be reviewed by the development review board, taking an added responsibility of regulation off the top and adding eyes to an important issue in our town. We have high elevation that is beautiful as many of the hunters in our room, so from firsthand experience in past few days, I'm sure you've been out there appreciating steep slopes. When you're out there, think of it again and consider what would it do if a hill fell? What does it look like? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. I know that I have in my minute, my notes from our joint meeting of keep, so I don't have, I don't have recollection.
It wasn't a majority. We, it was a split vote to decide to keep it or not.
Yeah.
At that, at that point.
Yeah. Well, I hope that you can review it again and consider it.
As we polled between the trustees and the select board members, there was, I don't remember the vote yet, but it was, I know you two were wanting to keep it.
Or, yeah, what about you? You've been, we did want to vote.
I was really on the fence. I totally understand what you're saying, but I'm, I know that I didn't want to have the village trustees and select board at odds with any one thing, you know, have it be one thing that really kept us. And you could explain that too, Todd, if.
Did you want to say that this was outside of the village? There is an exception, it does not have anything to do with the steep slopes inside of the village, like the gorge behind Copley and Country Club.
Right.
This is only in the town.
Right.
And you'll see on that map that that mostly reflects the slopes of Elmore and up by Mont City.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, the village trustees still weigh in on it together with the select board. If you explain what happens if that, that happens, if the select board says, we want this, and the trustees say, no, we don't want it, you have to create two.
Yeah, we're unique in the county. There are many places like Hyde Park and Johnson where there are separate, the village and the town act separately. There are separate town-village governments. There's a village manager, a town manager, there's a village zoning board, a town zoning board. It creates a lot of red tape for people. What we do well here is we have a planning council and a development review board that is jointly appointed, both the select board and the trustees. We work off joint zoning bylaws and a joint town plan, so ultimately both boards need to agree to the language, otherwise it doesn't survive. The, if both boards are adamant about, I want the plan to say X, and they want the plan to say Y, that's the first part of breaking up our communities and basically writing two town plans, two sets of zoning bylaws, two planning commissions, two DRVs, double your staff, that kind of thing. So we're trying to keep the plan so in the language that both boards can agree to. Otherwise, we have two separate plans.
Yeah. Anyway, I just wanted, Jamie, you're first, and you can go next, sir.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah, thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
My name is James Rooster. I'm here in Morris Town. There are more items on my list here that I'm going to cover because of time limitations. Maybe we'll come back around to them later. I am going to start by saying that it's my understanding that we're all working on a document that became published today, and I think that's really unfortunate that the folks in this room haven't had a chance to look at the document skin full, to have considered it, especially since those changes were made three, four weeks ago. This document also needs revision dates so that we know when it was last revised, maybe what those revisions were. Not to mention it doesn't have a date on it, period. And this is a one-off. If our town had a Twitter account, it's twenty-two zero.
Twenty-twenty, twenty-third.
I know, but it doesn't say what date it was written. As a one-off, I would say if we had a Twitter account in town, if we were responsible enough to do that, someone could have put that out there and said, hey, there's a new version out there. But items that I would like to see or that I'm concerned about, there's no mention of EV charging stations in the town plan. Most recently, in November and October, the governor specifically called out EV charging stations and their importance. Oh, let's see, what else? Transportation on page eleven, I don't know if that's the old page eleven or new page eleven, talks about truck lining lanes should not be, truck lanes, truck lanes on Route fifteen, truck lanes on Route one hundred. That's just, I mean, do people really think that if we put in a small truck lane, it's going to really speed up the commute for that many people on their way to Burlington? Or S, the amount of cars that could get by on a small truck lane is relative with few, technically considering the time, energy, and money it would take to construct it. Additionally, the references to Chutesville Hill should be removed. I went through there just yesterday, the day before. I saw no signs that reduce the speed though. It's still fifty miles an hour through there. Well, I don't know where I'm going to get that from, but there are no signs that say forty, forty-five. There might be signs that say wildlife corridor. That's just a caution, as it should be, because it's a wildlife corridor. We should be being safe. Those signs are out there for the safety of the driver, so I think that should be removed. The walkway safety plan mentioned on page fourteen only talks about implementing pedestrian-related options from that plan, nothing about bicycle options. Those could be included. I think that safety plan could also be uploaded to, uploaded to the town website where people could review it. Also, let's see, plan supports efforts to make both uptown and downtown Morrisville safer and more accessible to bicycle traffic. My, my question would be how, provide some examples? And what about some of the roads outside of downtown Morrisville, like Randolph Road or State Coast? How can we make that happen? Talking about the airport, do we have tangible proof that the airport is an economic driver for the town? You know, I live higher up here on the way out of town, and the approaches and the departures from the planes are pretty loud. Longer runway means bigger plane, means more noise. Asking town residents to pay for village sewer systems? I don't think so. You know, spread out across, whatever you want to call it, non-user people. That's already included in the cost of services and goods that the people in the village sell. So I'm already paying for those in that way, so I don't think as a resident of town, I should be paying for that. Likewise, utility lines, our utility lines, if they're going to be buried, that should be covered either through directly with Morrisville Water and Light or the village. Childcare, page fifty-four. My kids are grown, but I would be really unhappy to read the town plan and see that the childcare section was nearly happy and pace from the previous year with three or four worse teams. That's all the consideration the childcare has gotten, and it's an important issue, and all the gap gets a positive case. Lastly, planning's easy. The implementation is hard. How are you going to do this implementation plan? How are you going to track it? What are your key performance indicators? My big issue, as many of you know, is the Duhamel property. I am adamantly against the use of saying prioritize gravel, because as you look back through documents, you can see that that was not the intent at the original town meeting. And lastly, I'll be as nice as I can, but this document is very difficult to read. This document needs a professional proofreader and editor, someone who is an independent third party. If I were an English teacher, I would barely give it a passing grade. That's why I'm, thank you.
Thanks for your comment. You can go, sir, and then whoever's after that.
My name is Bruce Scatter. I live on Whiteford Road. I'm concerned that the merging or the combined planning between the village and the town is leading to compromises and treating the town like the village, and it seems that there is more rural character that's not reflected in this plan. I think the steep slopes is one thing, but also the proposed reduction of the minimum lot size is huge. It's, it would have a very dramatic change on the character of the town if it were reduced from eighty thousand square feet to forty thousand. I can't imagine how a forty thousand square foot lot in our area would be viable, and if everyone subdivided to under an acre, we would not have the rural landscape that we like, that brought us here, that maintains our environment. So I think that needs to be very seriously considered. I would suggest removing it. I would suggest matching what our neighboring towns do, where you have areas of two-acre minimum lot and areas of three or five-acre minimum lot. Stowe and Hyde Park both have their outlying areas, five-acre minimum lot. Stowe has an interim three-acre, and then they go down to two surrounding the village. Russ to say that the entire town can be subdivided down to below an acre is pretty outrageous, and I think, I think that needs some serious considerations. I also agree with Jamie that prioritizing gravel extraction from the Duhamel property, when it was purchased primarily for, for open space and gravel, there's already been two phases of gravel extraction. I think reducing the prioritization of gravel and recognizing the recreation up there will be important. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next out there? Ed, want to come up?
I think Leah had her hand up first.
You can go next. Now, he was up there before.
Okay.
He was just quiet and polite back there.
Someone.
Yeah.
So I finally got, I finally got to reading the whole thing.
Takes a while.
Well, it takes a while, and the comment about naming this property, it's well enough written. It just really could use a professional, sexy editors' touch. It's actually possible to prove edited only stuff because we know what it says. I think it's well enough written. I want to commend the people that worked on it, call in all the rest for the exclusiveness of the document. That's one of the comments that I have to make, is I don't know, how common is a twenty-year plan? I think in human society in the United States, in our political system, may be unrecognizable in fifteen years.
Right, with ten, it's a ten-year plan.
To anyone living today. So it's a little bit ambitious, but under the, under the explanation that it's aspirational, well, that's fine. A couple of things for that long-lived plan I might have liked to see, but then some of that's just mine and a few other people's personal issues. I'll come to that in a minute. A lot is made about green space, which is great, but that is in the face of some real goose that this town has made, and to the most glaring, of course, is the argument property. It's a tragedy, it's disgrace, that somehow the town didn't muster the political constituency to save that thing. As it is, I don't know that I saw anything in the plan about making some use of the donut. I don't know if everybody knows that it's permitted and there's a state kind of deserve or whatever the state calls it on, on this water front part of it.
It's a parcel of conservative property.
That ought to be in the plan, something that the town ought to vigorously pursuing. At one point, the high school had educational signs. They were using it as a teaching resource, which was great. I was out there before Hertz I got in, I saw foxes and other things, and it was a wonderful place to walk. So that's not in the plan. The Duhamel property, I don't know anything about. It's just that whatever the town had to promise to the Act Two-Fifty people to get it, there's, you might make a case for forcing the town to adhere to that, and if that had certain limits on the use of gravel versus recreational, the town should be required to support that by going back to the legal permit, but I, that's not a big topic of mine. One thing that I did notice, and I was glad and unhappy at the same time to see, is that finally, there is some recognition of the existence of a potential park along the riverfront just below Degenerate. Well, isn't that wonderful? For those who don't know, George Carter, nineteen oh three, gave the town a gift, and it somehow got into the hands through several interesting steps of order and light. And at this point in time, and this is kind of like piecing things together through private conversations, which I will, I'm hesitating to hold or retract at the moment, is that to me, it looks like they're trying to do something with the properties and the deeds and whatever in such a manner as to extinguish the separate existence of Clark Park and the original parcel. For one thing, you can't really tell where the parcel is because that land is gone. You'd have to drop a plumb bob down to wherever is currently there. It all got washed away with the twenty-seventh flood. So I'm glad that that's mentioned, including such language as boardwalk and pocket parks. You're welcome. I've been discussing that since twenty fifteen with a bunch of people, and I thought it might be wise to step back because Order of Light was having so much trouble with it. They didn't meet a different issue. My feeling is very different at this point, since they expressed a direct and open hostility to any sort of recreation going on there. So currently, if you look at front page four, tomorrow, you'll see the address to the work I put together, and let's see where it goes from there. Okay. The biggest thing.
You're over, way over, you're way over.
I'm sorry, I didn't know there was time. The biggest thing, this thing there, of course, is the combination of village and town and the elimination of participation in government and the running of a political entity, municipal entity, by a power company. It's about time that the village and town had its own departments so that they could be run appropriately, and Order of Light and the trustees cease to exist.
Thank you.
That language, that language wasn't there, it was taken out of the plan, just so you know.
Taken out, that's most important.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Leah Lauter. I live on Jersey Way. Because I get confused with Jersey types, but I live on Jersey Way. And I'm looking at page fifteen, talking about walking, and I appreciate all the information about sidewalks. I would like to just mention that there's a lot of buildings going up, and many people are going to be living in that area that have not previously lived there, and so I'm hoping that we can get a sidewalk from basically your Randolph Road is up through, as you say, to Bishop Marshall School ASAP, because I walk there and I end up walking right along, you know, the road and the ditch, and there's no sidewalk for a good portion of that, so that I hope that we can do that quickly. Also, it would be really good to have a crosswalk there because the bus does stop there, and so kids are crossing to get to Jersey Way. And also, at the end, would you guys have a bus stop there too, at some point, in that area location for people who are living up there? I know a lot of stuff I'm not right. And, oh yeah, on the north end of town, when I walk down that way, there is no crosswalk from, I don't know what that thing is, but over to Oberschance, right there. Yeah, whatever that is.
TD Bank or People's Bank.
People's Bank. Okay, thank you. There's no crosswalk, so if you are walking and you want to cross over to where Oberschance is, there's no crosswalk from basically where, yeah, it is. So I'm hoping that we can adjust that, because I like to walk around town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comment. Who's next? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Nancy Danks. I just wondered if anybody had done a cost analysis of what if we implement this plan, the tax impact would be?
Do you know that, Todd?
No, I mean, there's so, there are so many options here. It's almost, that's not an answerable question.
So nobody's really looked at it?
Well, there, I mean, there are myriad alternatives for some of the things suggested in the plan, so you'd have to go through each iteration if you're on what the board decided. So, no, I think the, I think you're asking for too big a range here for possible outcomes to come up with a cost.
And the second question, by adding all the housing to the village, does that, how does that impact our tax rate?
I'm not the tax rate guy. I mean, this is not, it's not really a town plan question, Nancy, unfortunately. The list is a be happy to answer.
Well, I think it is.
The list is a be happy to answer. That does add to, new development adds to town's grand list, and the grand list growth helps offset the taxes the select board need to raise each year. So the last few years is one and a half percent, one percent grand list growth, so when the select board adopts a budget that says we're having a four percent overall cost of increase in taxes, it really bumps down to three and a half, or two and a half percent or three percent, depending on the grand list growth. So that grand list growth is very helpful to the board and help balance in their budget.
Okay, all right. So I had really, I think, two comments. One is that with this plan, we're really dramatically changing what Morrisville looks like with the increased development. And so I urge, I guess, all boards to err on the side of having more meetings or public hearings. I think that change is happening. It's going to happen, it's probably good, but I think people want to know rather than, you know, so I think that the level of development, it's, it's just human nature, it's a change. And so I think when you're going through this kind of period, you have to sort of err on the side of maybe having the extra hearing or making sure the hearing is well advertised beyond maybe what's just legally required, because you know that there may be a lot of interest. So it's just a comment, and I think long-term, it helps all the boards because people feel like they've been heard regardless of the outcome. And the other thing is that a lot of things in it, it seems like there's a tremendous opportunity to take advantage of some of the federal monies that's coming in through the pipe to maybe to do some of the things in the plan, and I hope that the, I, boards will be very aggressive in terms of working on our regional collaborations and state collaborations and whatever else we need to do to make sure that we're getting a share of those federal monies, because I think some of the federal monies would address some of the larger sewer issues that were outlined here. So I'm not sure, a hundred percent sure about that, but I think that that right now is really important for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Wally?
Thank you, Bob.
Well, John, I see.
I live on Jersey Way here in Morrisville, and a couple items. One of them is the discussion of Buggie Springs. Maybe most of you don't know in this room, that's
Thank you, Bob.
Welcome, John Rossy.
I live in Southern Jersey Way, here in Morrisville, and a couple items. One of them is the discussion of Buggie Springs. Maybe most of you don't know in this room, that at one time is the water source for the village of Morrisville. This plan is promoting a drastic increase in the population of the village of Morrisville, so probably that water source should be protected for further use, Bob. It may be needed, it's also very pure water. In fact, at one time, the village board was approached to sell those water rights to somebody who wanted to model that, having been on the board. My concerns is a couple. The village of Morrisville, or the town of Morrisville, is quoted as being a quintessential Vermont village. Well, in the process of being permitted, or in the process of permitting, there's going to be 190-plus housing units in three tenths of a mile of Jersey Heights. Correct?
Somewhere in there, yeah, that sounds about right.
Okay, that doesn't sound like a Vermont village to me. That sounds like downtown Berry or the north end of Burlington. But that's what has happened with the every six months incremental zoning changes that have happened for the last three years. This board, the village board, the planning board, need to look at that, because it's been very beneficial to high-density developers, but for the single-family homeowner in the village of Morrisville is, or Morrisville is now an endangered species, because they're not going to want to live here because of the density.
Get some point after they put Alexander Road through.
All right, who's next? Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, friends. My name's Julie Mathieu. I went to school, graduated from Jewish Academy here, my father being a member of my class.
How are you, Julie?
I've been living out of state for a long time, but I've always maintained ties here, and my family has made significant ties here, maintains significant ties here. My father was a member of the zoning board for many years, and a business, a successful businessman, with a million dollar a year business, and he offered credit to people who could not afford to buy furniture, so they could have a decent place to live and develop their own wealth. My mother was a psychiatrist here, the only one in the county, because no other psychiatrist would agree to work for as little money as she made. And she helped a lot of people, including probably none of the folks in this room. And I have a really significant problem with all of the derogatory comments made about my family in this plan. I have a very significant problem with calling my building abandoned, when we have been working diligently for 10 years to try to find a mere $750,000 to finish construction on this building, when this town has seen numerous other buildings go up with very little affordable housing that cost more than $12 million, or, and the latest one, on Hudson Street, $24 million for a mere, what, 24 units. That is criminal, and I am sick of this harassment. And Todd Thomas, you have been slandering my family for too many years, and I need you to stop it. It is all over these documents, it is all over the front porch forum, you have been saying horrible things, and getting other people to try and get other people to say horrible things, and I am sick of it. We have turned the other cheek for many years, because we thought maybe we could play nice with Morrisville, but I am no longer willing to accept that as the status quo. Now, this body may or may not want to hear that this plan needs to be changed, but it needs to be changed. All these derogatory comments need to come out, and they need to come out before it's republished, before it's submitted to the state as part of Morrisville's requirement to fulfill its consolidated planning requirements with the state in order to get public funding and use public funding to support Todd Thomas, and Trish, and all the rest of the people who want to say horrible things, and violate the Fair Housing Act, and violate the ADA by saying that housing for older people should be segregated and only be existing up near the hospital. That's craziness, people should live where they want to live. This plan doesn't do anything to require Morrisville to complete its sidewalks. There are broken sidewalks that violate the ADA. They need to be fixed, it shouldn't be just one sidewalk that people with disabilities or older people who trip should be allowed to walk on. This is not acceptable. And this should have been fixed in 1973, and it hasn't been fixed yet. That's when the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 was passed, that said, fix your sidewalks, make them accessible. That's not acceptable, but the plan in 2020 doesn't do that yet. Now, if I understand that? If anybody wants me, I will let my sister to take it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Laura Mathieu, I live with my mom on Congress Street. Forty years as a psychiatrist, making $35 an hour, and she saved a lot of you guys, so I don't want to hear any more bad things about her or my father, especially since now we can't understand English. So, Julie starts with, I disagree with downsizing density for the land adjacent to Maple Street and Congress Street. The areas closer to downtown should remain higher density. My family's home is in this zone, we hope to add some housing development there, we did not get notice of this downgrading density. As to public comments, I recommend that everyone who disagrees that they have had an adequate opportunity to comment, should submit written comments that Morrisville will be required by state and federal law to submit to the state and to keep on record as part of this plan. Julie will continue to draft more comments and point out all of your infirmities, and I hope that the town will take Julie's and other people's written comments seriously, because it's not appropriate to prevent public comments to this draft. The Mathieu Building is not abandoned. It may look rundown, but that's the historical society's fault, because those stupid tin things were what they required us to put on, so that's just yucky. We have been actively developing that over the years, we fixed up the foundation, we fixed up, we have like architectural and engineering plans, but the zoning board in this town keeps changing their little rules when it comes to our building, and there are other activities, like the Development Review Board process, that was changed when we made a choice. I wish the town, and my mom wants the town, to talk to us directly about what they want in that space for the building. We will be meeting with capstone and trying to figure out a good way to put together some low-income housing that's actually affordable, instead of the stuff going up nearby. Moreover, the partial collapse in the Portland Street side of the building was caused by the town, because its sewer water pipe was leaking directly into the building and undermined the foundation. You almost killed my brother David, can't decide whether that's a good thing or not, but I would really be upset if you did that, and you would be put forever. And embraced the level of its sidewalks above the sills of the building, causing it to flood. This is not, this can be, this needs to be fixed. It is not a good thing that this town plan suggests that specific businesses would benefit from like sidewalk renovation or something like that. Keep the plan generic. And I got two more comments before you pick me off the stage. Making a cement division on Brooklyn Street is really a bad idea for snow removal, or remind you to think about how hard it was to maneuver in the Copley parking lot, where I've had that tree planted cement thing. And housing up near Copley Hospital area, there are more people than living facility type people who want to live there, employees of the hospital, and people who want to have a good view of the nice farm with them nearby. It doesn't have to just be hospital-related living, people want to live everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, the hospital at Copley. Wanted to just thank everybody, really appreciate some changes in the start of the plan. Thank you, Todd, for putting in the property of the hospital zone. It says that it's preserved to accommodate future healthcare needs, but you've also added the option of putting a child in the Richmond Center there. We really appreciate that. We're currently working with six partners, there are some at Copley, Moyle Home Health and Hospice, they're all independent partners, Moyle County Health Services, The Manor, Tamra and Medicine, and the Moyle Health Partners. We're all looking to the Moyle Family Center to look at getting a substantial daycare of child enrichment facility up there, take care of those organizations, and even capacity for others in town, so we appreciate the changes that you've made. How's that on? Thanks, Colonel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comment? Yes, ma'am?
We can resume comments too, at seven o'clock.
We started about ten after.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Kristen Fogdahl, and I live on Jersey Way. I relate very much to the fact that this plan is aspirational, as Todd says, and I would just like to encourage all the bodies that are involved in it to bring more language into the plan that commits to preserving the character of a Vermont town like ours, and also to making sure that our infrastructure is not overtaxed by all of the growth that is protected and that is already happening. I think that you're hearing tonight from a lot of people who are concerned that maybe the growth is happening in a little bit of a willy-nilly fashion, and not particularly looking at the big picture. And I think that it's really important for Morrisville and Morrisville Town to not think of them, not think of ourselves as just an individual entity, but as part of a larger area, and I would encourage the board to be thinking about what the Regional Planning Commission is thinking about the larger area, because in long term, it may be that we need to be not assuming that Morrisville needs to bear the brunt of this growth. And finally, I would say that I would really like to encourage all, all parties, because I realize that there are a number of committees that are sort of working individually, but that also contribute to the whole, whether it's the select board, village trustees, the planning commission, the Development Review Board, I think, and really all of us as citizens as well, I think we need to commit ourselves to really looking at what best practices are for smart growth as we move forward, because there are a lot of projects that have already taken place, and more that are, have either just been approved or are about to be approved, that I think are potentially damaging to Morrisville in the long run. And I realize that it's a very complicated issue, as someone said in this room, I don't remember who, that planning is easy, that execution is hard, although I don't know that Todd would actually say that.
Planning is not easy.
Not easy.
Because it is very complicated, but I, I think that we really need to be careful and to be availing ourselves of best practices that have been developed elsewhere, to ensure that we're doing this in a smart way.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Go ahead, Graham.
I just have something quick, so. I also want to reiterate, you know, thanks to all the people who put in the time and effort into developing the town plan, it's taken a long time, and there's been a lot of meetings, and that have been attended by a lot of different folks, maybe not everyone has seen them, you know, certainly doesn't just jump right out at you, you know, I've gotten involved a little bit more in politics in the last, you know, three or four years, and you definitely need to search it out, try to find it, but once you do, you know, there is quite a steady stream of communications that is available to keep you up to date on the processes and things like that, so thank you to all the people involved, I know it's not an easy process.
Sorry, Graham, can you introduce yourself?
Sure.
There you are.
Yep. And...
Do you live here in Morrisville?
Graham Mank, I live in Morrisville, yes. And I'd like to just point, make a comment on page 49, there's a reference to a new affordable housing committee, to look into, you know, ways to help the town develop new affordable housing, and I'd just like to ask the board to consider, I think it's a great idea, but I'd like to consider maybe removing the affordable part and just have a housing committee that can look at how, you know, promoting housing, or, you know, concerns of the community can be expressed to that committee, which then can, you know, work with the planning commission and the select board to help do that, but, you know, I feel housing is needed in town, which is why I'm developing more housing, and I think, you know, I'm a supporter of a housing partnership, I was on the board, I think they're doing great, but they certainly can't, you know, deal with it alone, I'd like to see them have more access to create more housing, but also, I think it'd be beneficial to have it more, you know, inclusive, considering all types of housing, because, you know, single-family homes, duplexes, both be benefiting, both market rate and affordable.
I'm interested in your partners going up, just affordable.
Do you address the board?
They're affordable for all the towns that have them.
Go ahead, Dennis, and then you, Laura.
Well, I need to address that.
My grandmother's got a social security, though.
Not going there.
Go ahead.
I'd like to get into it a little bit.
As much as I respect your opinion, I really absolutely...
Kathy.
I get it, I get it. It's very harsh when families, people attack each other.
I'd like to get into the word affordable, if I could.
I'm, sorry, can you introduce yourself?
Dennis Smith.
Thank you.
Let's go.
Thank you, guys.
Affordable has a wide range of meaning. The numbers that I've heard of apartments in this town are not affordable to Morrisville people, but when somebody from Chilton County hears this same price, gosh, that's a pretty good rate! And when somebody from Boston or New York hears that price, it's a hell of a deal! And we're going to end up with those people that can afford that rate, and our working people are not going to be able to afford affordable housing.
Next task. Laura, go ahead.
Hi, Laura Straits, I am currently serving on the DRB, so I have a little more insight on when these meetings have happened. Based on that, I would like to say that there was a version that the Planning Council originally submitted to both the select board and trustees. We, there were a few of us who caught wind of it and started voicing our opinions. I would like to see that document, because what people don't understand is there have been meetings, and six or seven items have been redlined, was State Slow, there was Digestor, lots of things that, I think it's important that you know that your citizens have asked for them. I also think it's important that we know from the trustees and the effort of transparency what those were, who voted for them and against them. I think also in time, in order to save time, that we don't start bringing up things that the select board and trustees have already decided will not be in this visionary document. I would also like to ask, in future, if you're going to have a meeting where there's going to be a two-minute limit, then you give us notice, so that people can prepare. I read everything, I never saw anything about that. I think it was, people were under the impression it was going to be an open conversation, so just for all concerned, if it's going to be a two-minute, that way we can prepare and stick to your timeline. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Laura. Who's next?
I did have a question. And because I've talked about this when I've gone to the Planning Commission, we're talking about the town plan, and there seems to be a conflict between the language recommended by the state and the language in the draft town plan about the river corridor, and I'm interested in town regaining the downtown designation so that grants and other opportunities are available for affordable housing and other additional community improvements, so I'm just wondering if that language could be cleaned up so we get a definite approval on the town plan. And that, and we don't have to have language about river corridor in the town plan.
Are you, is that a question?
Yes.
I don't think there's any issue with the language for granting river corridors in the plan, as written.
Okay, because I know the documentation.
I think everybody tested that as well.
Documentation was.
Sorry, I made a talk, I didn't know you didn't want to talk. Yeah, there's no way should be the language.
Yeah, river corridor language doesn't have to be in there, that's what I meant.
Correct.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any comments? From Zoom? From Zoom, who has a question? What comment? Well, this is good, it's exactly an hour, and now. Well, we're, we're actually going to take thirty minutes and have a deliberation about it, what we're going to have in it, our board is, and then we're going to come out and, and.
And there'll be another public hearing, the next public hearing will most likely be on January third, is a continued public hearing, they have to have at least two hearings, and they have to have a vote at their next regular meeting, so as opposed to having something during Christmas time, January third will be the next public hearing, and there could be a possible vote on the plan unless the Select Board wants more hearings on January seventeenth. So those are your two dates to put in your calendar, the third and the seventeenth, and any language changes, so the intent is the Select Board deliberate tonight to settle on some language, any differences of opinion, and anything they want to massage out, every time they change the language, they have to re-warn the plan, so at some point, we have to get to a meeting where we don't change language, otherwise we'll never get to vote on it, so the intent is to, as of right now, the original intent was to change the language tonight, get to the hearing on January third with a new draft that hopefully you don't need any changes on, so you can vote on it later that month. That's the plan as of right now.
Kelly, I know you had a question, and there's one more hand up, do those two, and then we're going to go into deliberative session.
I'm sorry, I just broke my mouth.
Don't worry about it.
So I don't understand what you just said, and I'm sorry that I. You said you guys are going to adjourn for thirty minutes.
We're going to go into deliberative session to discuss all the comments we've had.
To discuss the comment, and then what's going to happen?
Then we're going to come back out, and we're going to, I guess.
Set a, set a hearing date for January third, most likely.
Okay, so Todd, you made a comment that, that concerns me greatly.
Okay.
And you said we're talking about the changes and how the changes are going to extend the period, is there a deadline that this has to be done by?
Well, the Select Board is the one who's pushed the timeline and wanted this done sooner rather than later, at some point, if we don't adopt the town plan, we'll be not able to update our zoning bylaws.
Okay, so when's that?
That is coming, I believe, this later this spring.
Okay, so the zoning is, is something that's a whole different issue, and I'm not going to get into that tonight, because I've got to do a little bit more research on that, because I don't know, I don't know a lot of people in here, but I do know that, and you probably know, my family has been here for, I'm a fifth generation in Monterey, I live in the house someone in my family built in eighteen-twenty in Katie's Falls, and that's part of the change in the zoning that is just driving me over the deep end, but that's okay, we'll, I'll do my research on that. I think I'm concerned about rushing this, I'm concerned about a rush to finish it, and I do understand, you know, things can, the status quo is okay right now, let's just make this work right, let's get it right, so that everybody's happy, because I'm at a point where I'm ready to move, I'm ready to move, I'm the last draper in Katie's Falls, the last one, and all the other ones have gone, and now, and I'm ready to move, I'm going to Alaska, live for your dice, please.
Bless your hands, dear. Thanks, Kelly.
So is there a motion vote?
There's one more, wait, there's one more question back there, I saw, I saw a hand go up, here we go.
Hi, my name is Rita, I guess my biggest concern was the next public reading, location that more people can attend with this agent.
Thank you.
This is not working.
Can I ask one quick question?
Again?
Just to get information.
Go ahead.
Where can we as property taxpayers get the information on what, like, Mr. Mink would have to pay towards the sewer system or the water system when they put up buildings, when they put up big apartment houses, what is there, is there a fee each apartment house?
You're in, Kath, you're in the wrong building.
No, I'm, where can I get that from?
Morrisville Water.
Village Water Light.
Three, 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 four eight.
And they have a meeting Thursday, right?
Wednesday.
Okay, we've got two more questions, and that's going to be it, go ahead, Nancy.
Very quick.
You have people online.
I just wanted to mention that in the report, the report mentions Copley, I think what is very critical to Morrisville is that you have, here in Morrisville, we have three independent medical facilities that are not associated with any other organization, the Moyle Health Partner, we probably have more, but the Moyle Health Partners, Tamara and Copley, that's a real asset for this community, and I know that's partially addressed, but I think we should focus on the fact that that is an asset, and that we should work to preserve that independence of those organizations to be.
Thank you. Who else has a question?
Trisha.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I, I just want to say, and maybe it is because I'm on the inside track here, but I have worked very closely with the Planning Commission on this, this has been a very public three-year plan, this town plan, I mean, I hear people say, like, they didn't know about it, you know, it's been in the papers, it's been on Front Porch Farm, it's been on very, very social, this is, this is not like, like, I've seen, I've worked for the town for eleven years, I've seen some things that I felt were a little bit like back-room kind of quiet things, this has been a very, very public meeting thing that everyone was invited to, and I understand, like, now that people are coming out and they're, they're voicing their concerns, that's absolutely fabulous that you're voicing your concerns, but I really do feel like we are down to the wire on this, you know, we were talking about becoming a designated downtown, I really thought I would be applying for designated downtown last fall, we are now, and we are into next year at least, by the time we even get to this point, I, I think these points that everyone brought up are really, really good, but I think they should be maybe brought into our next town plan that we start again once we get through this town plan right now, I mean, I really do feel like we're at the, the end of the rope here, and you know, we had some comments that someone wanted to see our designated downtown expanded, we went to the state, the state was like, no, you can't extend your boundaries, the Select Board also had said, six months ago, no, we're not expanding it, because they're trying to encapsulate what is considered part of our designated downtown, and how it is, what it does mean to us as a downtown, so I, I just want everyone to hear it from another point of view, like, we really, this could go on for another five years if everyone keeps going with all these points, but I think we've really, really done, from a town's perspective, a great job with this town plan, and we have, we have talked about many issues, many, many, as you read through it, and we all will always have issues about it, but I want people to rally together, and let's, let's all try to work together on getting this to go through. Thank you.
Thanks, Trisha, thanks a lot, that, I echo all of those comments you made, you know, it's tough for me, we, we sit on this side of the table, and we're getting blasted from all you folks that are hearing about it like the eleventh hour, when I go to a Planning Council meeting, and there's nobody there, there's nobody there, how many times do you have meetings and there's like, just interested parties there, that's it, not, not, um.
It happens.
Yeah.
What you're experiencing is that it's not really visible, the growth is happening, and people are really concerned, so that is part of what's driving.
I get it.
And I want to say that, I think that everybody has a different concern with what's going on in town, what might concern me isn't going to concern somebody else.
True.
So if Trish is still there, I think that you need to, to put more wording in things, so if I would have seen, like I said earlier, access road across blah, 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 you know, I would have been there, because that concerns me, you need to be more transparent with what you're having in your meetings, and then I think more people would come forward, but, I mean, I never saw anything posted that, you know, that that was going to happen, or you were even needing on that, so that's where that comes in, Trish.
Thank you, yeah, if anybody's not sure who, who was speaking, it's Trisha Fowler, who is our Community Development Coordinator, and I, I know that some people are looking around, wondering who she was, who was speaking.
Oh, sorry about that, I should have said, thank you, Kathy Chafee, appreciate your comments.
Can I ask a question of you, Trisha?
Yes.
You think that for, part of your concern is that to have this new document so you can apply for the downtown designation, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, this, this has to be adopted by the town of Morris Town, the village of Morrisville, it has to be approved by Regional Planning Commission, there's a whole bunch of other facets that have to work into play to get this to go through, we have to have MAC, a whole bunch of stuff that has to go through, and then it gets submitted to the state of Vermont, this is, because even if, if this was approved in January, you're talking next June before we're designated downtown anyways, because this is how long this process takes, I was selected by the Select Board to start the designated downtown process at the same time the town planned, so now for more than two years, we've been dancing with this.
Thank you. If I make a motion, we recess to deliberative session immediately.
What do you want to do when you come back?
The next, the next hearing is going to be January third at six o'clock, so come on January third at six o'clock.
We're not going to make any motions tonight, as far as.
So when you come back, the meeting.
Gary, can you, Gary, can you add a date certain to your motion, January third, six o'clock, to continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, so restate your motion, please, for the audience.
Make the motion that we adjourn the deliberative session to be. To be reconvened January third at six P.M., here at Morris Town offices. I have a motion by Gary, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Judy, any further discussion?
We will, we will reconvene back into our Select Board meeting after the deliberative session.
Regular Select Board meeting after. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is passed. Eric, are the changes or additions to the agenda?
That sounds.
That's amazing.
Hearing none. You had a bunch of like, on that were way over here. Approve the minutes, approve the minutes of November first, twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I thought that I had voted no, I can't find it now, on, and Sarah knows, because she's did the audio, I thought I voted on no on the first motion made on number four. Signed a warning, a motion made by Brian Keller to mail out ballots with no, it's not supposed to be paid. Okay, I, I thought I voted no on that, but.
You can check.
Oh, yeah, because I would have voted no as well, I believe, because we want it posted, please.
Okay, we can amend it.
Okay.
If it, if it, if you see that I did, yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minute's passed, next, community concerns, community concerns tonight, Pam?
I have one. Hello, Select Board.
Hello.
My name is Pam Love, I was here at the last meeting and speaking to you about animal control issues, and I just wanted to follow up with you to see if there was any progress of leaving any of the animal regulations and laws at this point.
The answer is no, we haven't had time to do anything yet, but we, we have, we are intending to probably, most likely, contract it out, because if we can't find somebody that can work for the town, you know, one of us, or we're going to hire somebody or contract it out, but we, we very much recognize we need to do something, and it's just, it's on our radar, we just have been really, really busy, I know Eric is more than right out straight, and.
Yeah, no, I'm not getting after Brian, I think he does a good job, and as we know, I'm one person, it's a little unreasonable, I was doing a little research, so the last time that this ordinance was revised was two thousand and fifteen, is that correct?
Sounds right.
Okay, so I just wondered if you could clarify a few things in my reading and what I've written here, I don't know if you have a particular ordinance available or near you, but under section C definition, and then going down to the section where it says running at large, so running at large means a dog, and hybrid is not on a leash within the village limits, and I'm wondering, does that mean the town as well?
Not sure.
So we can check into these things.
Yeah, we can check into that.
These are just things, I have this question.
Right.
I think there's some gray areas in this, and a big area is that people say the dog is on my property, so he doesn't have to be tethered or properly restrained, so back here again in the section where running dogs is, do they need to be tethered or fenced on private property?
I don't think so, I don't think that's in there.
Well, Brian said, it's a law, not just in the village, but in the town, so I'm following through here to see just exactly where we stand with this, because, fact being, if the dog is on his lawn, he's, you know, a great dog, smartest dog, he never does anything wrong, but this particular time, I've had him jump out through the electric fences and come after us, and, you know, a big dog coming at you, I don't have anything against any kind of dog, I love all of them, but they need to be tethered, tended to, and the rules really need to be clear, because some will say, oh, he's on my land, so I don't have, I don't have to do that, well, how are you sure that he's not going to come jump in and running after me, you know, with my dog on a leash doing what I'm supposed to be, so I think there's a gray area there, that if that could have some clarification, would be very helpful. Another thing, to the vicious dog section, let me read it here, it says, number two, any dog snaps or tears a clothes in any attempt to bite any person or persons, and the fact is proven to the animal control officer, the dog or hybrid shall be deemed and declared by the animal control officer to be a vicious animal, such animal shall be impounded, now, as we know, the dog in, I spoke of last week, that ripped the raincoat, and it could have been a lot worse than that, was anything ever followed through with my incident, and there's no reports or anything to verify that anywhere, so these are things that would be most helpful, and I also wanted to say, October thirty-first, my incident happened at, which I spoke of, the four-way stop on Maple Street Mall, mine was on October thirty-first, November fourth, police officers were called for a fight attack in that same area on November fourth, so, you know, there again, it's a question of somebody in the village, great big dog, not tethered, and if this happens, it's a recipe for disaster, so, as I say, clarification, I mean, something's going to be done here, there is going to be a lawsuit, and somebody's going to get hurt, that would have been a little kid walking that, and the German Shepherd got out of that, it wouldn't be my conversation, it would be somebody else's, and it would be terrible. And it says on the section, penalties and costs, costs are set annually by the Select Board, so just a thought that if the funds and costs were raised, and tickets were given out more, or at all, it might increase. and tickets were given out more, or at all, it might increase awareness of the owners. You know, hey, this is what I need to be doing or I'm gonna get this fine. But we have a process written down, but there's no follow-through on it. And, you know, it's just hard to walk in the village, as I said, what, 19, 20 miles? And just the other day, I'm meeting the street. I had a loose doggy out there. It was an older dog. I don't care if it's pink, purple, green, yellow. I mean, they need to be what they're doing. And I need to do what I'm supposed to be doing. So that's why I'm here. And I think it's an important issue. We have 550 registered dogs, 50-something registered. We have who knows how many unregistered. And then we have all these other people and all these great big apartments and stuff moving in as well. So I think it would be a great help if we really got down to business and got something done in this area.
Definitely.
So that's what I had to say, and thank you for your time. And I think there again, some reports, incident reports and things like that. I don't know if the police department has to write a ticket or a report for the right incident that they had in the same place. I don't know if, you know, that stuff should be available to the public.
Right. Jason, does that go to the Moil and get put down as an incident, if Brian does it or you do it?
Well, the case that you're referencing, we got a call. I think we got it reported to the D. So that one's documented.
Yeah.
But most cases go directly to Brian.
So he doesn't create an incident?
No, he doesn't.
And he doesn't write tickets.
He should, really.
He said he has a written ticket.
There should be a documentation of everybody.
We can find the incident on the 4th of November involving non-merited clients from the property house. And we had trouble because he was not able to indicate which home the dog came from, and there were two German shepherds in that area.
Exactly.
So neither one of them, you know, can hook their dog or tether their dog.
Right.
So, but as far as that incident is concerned, we were not able to definitively show which house the dog came from. So we aren't sure which shepherd it was.
But it could still be documented that this happened in that area.
It was.
Okay.
This one, I'm sorry, this is the documented one that she provided on November 4th.
Okay.
It was, and it's called and reported after the fact to D. They did generate incident.
Okay, good.
My follow-up was not, not able to articulate the reason it came down.
Oh, Brian said it was, and there was no anything done. And according to that regulation in there, if D. by Brian, that if this was a vicious, I don't know what else you would call a dog pulled force from out you and ripping your jacket. It's not just a ring shell. I don't know what you call that. And there was no repercussions, to my knowledge, not a fine or anything for this. And, I mean, I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair. Somebody's gonna get hurt.
We need to update the dog policy.
Yeah.
Well, we gotta be careful with that, because Pam and I had this conversation. That's why I was getting so animated. I'm coming. I have two German shepherds. They are white, white bullyard, it's Spenceville. That's great. Now everybody did that. White bullyard is Spenceville. When I say sit, they sit. When they were at, we were walking on the valet trail, and a deer came, and they took off, and I said, get back here! And they came back. And that, so we gotta be careful, because not all dogs are bad dogs.
Right. Oh, it's not the dogs that are bad, it's the owners that are bad.
Well, that's true, but not all dogs are bad dogs. And so you really have to watch.
I'm not...
You know, they're trained. I had Tom come from, he does training. He was a guard down at the federal building when I was working down there. And he does dog training, and he came and trained my dogs when they were puppies.
Right.
So they, they, they're very good-trained, well-trained. But, you know, not all are bad.
Right.
I don't say that they're bad, Kelly. I'm just saying that...
No, I know you're not. It's just...
There could always be that one time that the well-trained dog can do it. I mean, there's no guarantee.
Not the well-trained that has a problem. They're like police dogs. Those two are like police dogs. They were trained by a state police officer. They're that training.
I think these ones that I'm speaking of to have such kind of training or...
Well, we will keep working on it. We're gonna work on it, and you can check back in, but we will keep on it.
I appreciate it.
And what do we put in the budget, Brian, when we're...
The budget we're in?
One more proposal for that year.
Oh, I don't know. We'll get, I could go and check.
I thought we increased the corporation.
We probably did. I think that we were thinking that we would need to do that.
Because we were talking about the contract services, so we had to increase the corporation. It's not the act you were looking for, forward-looking, you know, we're not gonna be able to find somebody like Brian, who wants, you know, gives more of his time than the money ever compensates for.
No, but if you raise the fines and that kind of stuff, you know, there's...
I understand fines don't come to the town. They go to the general fund, where a ticket's written for civil violation on the state court. We don't see that money.
But we could. We could make a fee that comes to the town.
Yeah. Sometimes it'll be done.
We could create an ordinance.
Like parking ticket.
Yeah, like a parking ticket.
Yeah, and if tickets were given out, as I say, you know, people would be more aware.
Yeah.
But we have a ticket book, but we need to write them.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Thank you. Thank you for coming in again, Pam.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thanks for your pardon.
Do we have any more community concerns? All right, we'll move to new business. Discuss and approve. I can't see who you're seeing. I only see us.
That's Allison Link.
Okay, go ahead, Allison. I can't hear you. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
We still can't hear you.
Hello? 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 Hello?
No. Must be your audio.
Hello? No, I'm not on mute. Um, hello?
No. Allison, I can hear you on Zoom.
Oh, okay.
They're turned down, aren't they?
They can hear me.
So can the select board hear me? It's Jeff Egan. Okay, we cut to it now.
Hello?
Go ahead, Allison. Can you hear Allison now?
Oh, thanks, Jeff. That was helpful. Hi, everyone. Allison Link, 35 Clark Ave, and also from Healthy the Moil Valley. I just wanted to just make the public comment that Healthy the Moil Valley will be attending the information session on Thursday. And that we have been preparing resources to help the community become informed on Act 164 and cannabis retail. And so just be on the lookout for, you know, the rollout of a variety of resources starting tomorrow. And just wanted to let folks know that it's, that we just want to have, you know, informed voters in Morristown on Act 164. And so therefore, there'll be a series of things coming up this week. And Jessica Bickford will be there on Thursday to ask questions or share just more about Act 164 and process and any other questions that folks may have that we can help in answering. So, thanks.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Any more community concerns? All right, hearing none. Now we'll go to new business. Discuss and approve updated non-union pay scales.
I have a I have a corrective comment for you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna give you this one to sign on in case you guys decide to sign it. The only thing that's different about this one than the one you have is they was a note that we took off of this one. Because it really wasn't...
To bring you a budget proposal that is as accurate as possible. We were still chasing a couple of dollar figures. It happened every year with this, and particularly with the highway projects trying to move all those dollars down a little higher. But they have, Dina and Paula have been working many hours overtime in order to get this done. We were already, Dina, we've already put a plan in place to begin this process two months earlier next year. But they are excellent staff. Smiles on their faces, even though their eyes tell me they're very tired. I can't tell much, I appreciate all of the work that they do.
Makes you realize that more and more that you're in the role you're in.
I know, perspective is everything.
Thank you.
Great. That's it, Eric?
It is.
Any questions for Eric?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Next select board concerns. Gary.
No, the only one I had was the Washington Highway pavement, and that's been addressed. And I was pretty aware that we wouldn't have any striping done this year because it went down. I don't know, I don't, I don't think I have anything. I know the town and the village are preparing for winter. Pretty well ready to go, I believe, so let the snow begin.
I did encourage a whole lot, because last week I met with both, Bill Garage on Town Highway Garage, Copper Road. They have a lot of discussions with them, and they're trying to do this in a couple of months. I encouraged them last week with the government's holiday on Thursday to take Friday as a day off, all but two. Took the day off. They're coming into the season, they don't see four day weekends, a four day block on the road. So they all seemed to jump out on that idea and got a good little break, and all looked out very well. We went to breakfast with the highway department, Gary, myself, and Kevin, and Scott, and all the highway guys.
Very productive and very appreciative as well. We talked a lot about safety concerns, and I reiterated to all the boys that in my past employment, that I was responsible for safety, and I just suggested that, you know, I had, I always had all my guys report to the office every Monday morning for fifteen, twenty minute safety meeting, just to quick refresher course. It doesn't take long with, you know, fifty to seventy guys to add the push tag up pretty fast, but it was well worth it. And just a friendly reminder, and I encourage all the highway department guys to do the same. You don't have to belittle anybody, all you gotta do is say, hey, if you're doing that, you ought to wear your face shield, or you ought to put your gloves on, or something like that. Just, just common sense stuff, and everybody seemed to be appreciative, and probably more appreciative of the bar crust than they were of me.
All right, thanks, Gary. Judy?
I want to thank the highway department because they fixed the piece of equipment up by the dog park. It was broken, and they saw to it, and they not only fixed that piece, but they reinforced the other piece of equipment there. So thank you. And I know that I thought about this before our meeting today, but looking at some type of strategic planning meeting with a select board and/or the planning commission and DRB, somewhere to start visioning for the future for our community. And I know I've shared with Eric, and Eric's kind of on the same page with that, too. And since we have Todd here, there was an article in the paper, and you were quoted. And I did come in and talk to Eric about it, but I'm wondering if he could speak to that article about the development? And, but you were quoted, Eric, from my understanding is you hadn't talked to the newspaper.
So I don't.
It's about.
About the make property, the make proposal.
Oh, the, I mean, the, 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 the article gave the impression that the meetings weren't warned. As Gary can tell you, both meetings were warned, and I even warned the sidewalk. You're not supposed to really warn sidewalks, and I warned the sidewalk just because the, I was being pushed to do so. And then I warned the sidewalk, and then I kind of got hung up to dry for it in the paper anyway. So it's kind of a can't win type thing. The meetings are all warned, they're published in the newspaper, they're here in the window, they're at the library, they're in the post office. I mean, they're everywhere, we're on the website, we're above and beyond what we need to do for morning meetings. And for a DRB hearing, the neighbors, the budding properties in with a hundred feet gets a letter sent to them by me. The people who are half a mile across town have no legal standing in a DRB proceeding. And the DRB has to determine who's an interested party or not. Interested party means in close proximity. So as much as someone from, from Skyview Acres, sorry, Tommy, name popped into my head, I apologize. Wants, wants to chime in about something.
That's why he's here.
On Jersey Heights, they have no legal standing. And if I start, if I start sending letters to invite people who have no legal standing to hearings, we risk, we risk getting sued by the developer. So it's a very thin, careful line we have to walk. I mean, these, yes, these are public meetings, but not all the public has standing in these meetings. The courts have defined who has legal standing and who doesn't, and only those neighbors in close proximity. Recently, the DRB on Gordon Lane, there's nine units there, there's a sixteen unit being, being instructed probably in the spring. I thought this fall, but it doesn't look like it, given the weather. The DRB, there was a party who lived at the end of Audi Lane, which isn't too far. I mean, think it was seventeen hundred feet as a crow flies? The DRB failed to make a determination, the DRB was split, so we left it at, we didn't determine if he was an interested party. We didn't say he was a non-interested party. And the, that person appealed the DRB's permit to court. Bram and his development team, whoever that entity LLC was, had to go to court to get him, get the lawsuit dismissed because he did not meet the definite interested party. So in that case, we were very liberal with saying this person participate, and we didn't say he wasn't interested. He appealed the project, he went to court, and the court said, he's not an interested party, DRB, you can't do this. You have to say, if that, this person's so far away, they have no standing. So to be very careful, we can't invite everyone to the hearings. There, it's not a select board hearing, it's not a planning meeting, we want everyone from the community. There's a certain people and a certain defined legal distance you have to be to actually chime in on a DRB project.
Well, and I think the, one reason I brought it up is, after talking to Eric, finding out that you were quoted in the paper, but you were never interviewed by the, was that correct?
All from emails.
Yes, all from emails, yeah, the, the paper hasn't, doesn't reach out to me for my quotes. It never has really.
So I just, I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, thank you, sorry.
And make it public knowledge.
Oh.
It was going from email over a change between him and another citizen in town, back citizen.
Did I miss the point of the whole question? I apologize.
That's okay.
My bad.
I just made a comment like that, too, because I read the paper, and what I answered from it was that there was hot information out there. And I put a post on front page forum, and it was, and it was great. And I talked to Todd, he explained to me what it was all about. And I apologized to Todd for that, I got that. In my, I guess, I learned a good lesson, you don't read paper and believe what you read.
Starting to get it.
Are you talking about the part where it accused him of withholding information from a public record request?
It was a whole general article that, yeah, and, and of course, I hadn't heard anything with us. I just, I was like, not action or anything like that, like that. So anyway, that was speaking on my part, and, and I apologized to Todd.
Well, I did the same thing, I read the paper.
Yes.
I talked to Eric about it, Eric set me straight on what was actually going on. And I thought it was important to the public know at this meeting, it's televised, it's, it's, to.
Clear the error.
That's it. Let's put the facts out.
I will call whoever ideas.
Good idea.
Yeah, in fact, I'd like to add, for the DRB's purposes, the DRB approved that project in open session. They actually didn't even go into delivery session. That's actually a remarkable form of open government. There's a couple members of the DRB who want to do things in front of the public, no matter what it is. I can't imagine any town around, anywhere in the state approving a hundred and thirty-six minute units in open session. It does not happen. This DRB did it. Literally, they couldn't have been more public. Every single thing was warned, we warned things that didn't legally, needed to be warned legally. And they approved the hearing in open session in front of a room where some people didn't like the project, and you still get killed. So you really can't win.
I think, and I wasn't really aware, but what a lot of things you're talking about are happening in the back several pages of the newspaper. So to direct the public's attention to that area, that's where they can see where all the warnings are for the meetings.
Sure. Thank you, Judy.
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you think I should go on?
No.
And Gary's the chair of the DRB, obviously, Gary, everything was publicly warned, and we went overboard and warned a sidewalk that didn't need to be warned.
You can check with Todd, I'm always on him about making sure so and so knows about this, or making sure everybody knows this and that. You can't be careful enough, as you're well aware. I mean, and the stuff still gets out there, it's out of context.
Yes.
Okay, just a few things, hopefully they're very brief. One is, I just wanted to say that Eric and I met with Drew from the SE Group, who entered the RFP around creating some vision and for green space around town. I thought it was a really successful meeting, and we'll be getting a proposal, a several tiered proposal that we can review and hopefully choose one within the next month or so. Where he's gonna, he'll give us, he said he'd give us like an all a part option. You know, he can do anything from making really simple drawings to recommending people who can do road type assessments, to pointing us towards funding sources. And he just had a lot of great ideas, and I think, I think it'll be really great to see what he comes up with. So that was a good discussion meeting last Wednesday. The info session at the community, the info session on Thursday at six o'clock at the community.
Civic Center.
Moyles Civic Center, next to Cumberland Farms. I affectionately call it Cumbie's, isn't sure many of you all do. I've had several people ask me if there's any way that we can, I know it wouldn't be this setup, if there's any way that we can have Zoom available. But this, okay, so this is like so many people who are just like at home with their kids or whatever, just want to be able to listen in, not even necessarily participate. Is it possible even to just have like the town laptop there for people to get some kind of audio? I don't, I mean, I don't want to create, I don't want to create a situation that makes the whole meeting like take longer than it needs to or more difficult, but in the name of getting more people the information that they need, because I feel like it's two really important articles that we'll be, like just getting gathering information about. The school, school board article, and the, and the article on marijuana disperatory services production. So.
Let me make a suggestion, let me reach out, let's reach out to GMA TV tomorrow.
Okay.
And let's see if they have availability to broadcast from that site with their equipment.
Okay.
This is all their stuff.
Right, okay.
But I can follow that corner.
Thank you, yeah.
Don't ask me where it might have done. So they have the expertise, let me just see if they'd be interested in broadcasting that information.
Yeah.
Or at least recording it when we broadcast.
Yeah, I just, there's, I mean, I've had, I've had a lot, because I'm working in the school now, too. Just, there's a lot of people who just want to know, there's confusion about it. What does a no vote mean? What does the yes vote mean? If we're gonna be having really high voter turnout, I just want to make sure that people are checking the box that they need to check, you know? And has, has this consequence for all of us?
But to be like the Joseph, that superintendent is going to be at.
Great, yeah, Brian, hearing it.
And review their question, whether, however, how deep this question and answers can go, I'm not sure.
Right, great, yeah, all the more reason I can broadcast.
Some of us could probably, I don't know, I don't want to suggest that.
No. Okay, never mind. I know you're.
Still good.
You can listen, I'm on my phone.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I thought.
I don't think that's such a.
Not a good idea.
Yeah, that was a good idea, but I don't know. Let's see, I think tonight, the issue or the, there's been some, just like some, I don't know, I want to elevate it to the status of issue, but there's just been talk tonight about how do we get the word out to the public around our meetings? And I know, because I'm new in this realm, that it can be difficult for me to navigate and to understand where to get the information. I'm not saying that we're doing it wrong, I'm just saying that maybe there's a way that it can be more accessible. And I'd be interested in visiting that, revisiting that, hearing other people's, like people in the communities, ideas about how to, how to make community meetings more, like when they happen, how do you get there? How do you zoom in? Just make that information just quick and easy. Right now, I can find it because I'm very persistent, and it's a few clicks, you have to go, you know, to this calendar or this, you know, government entity, and you find it, but that's me, I don't think the average person has needed mine.
Is it, so in the paper, in that back page where they have the warnings are, it has the agenda. I haven't looked at this, it's terrible. So the agenda's there for the planning commission and the DRB and.
DRB for warrant hearings would be there, any planning warrant hearings. A normal week to week planning hearing would not be in the paper, but any warrant hearings do. Every DRB hearing is warned in the paper, it has to be by state law. And the neighbors, the interested parties who are potential parties, all get personalized letters in the mail from me.
I was thinking as simple as like a, you know, a front porch warm reminder, and, you know, just like one easy link on the landing page of our website, where you can see a list of all the meetings and the addendums. It's just, we can, we can discuss later, I just, I feel like that's been some.
Maybe process will refine and they better, sure.
Just a feedback. And I'd love to, very briefly, just say, I also was quoted as a news and citizen, and I was not.
Accurately?
Not accurately, and I wasn't called for comment or for fact checking. I mean, I don't think what I said was terribly far off, what I said was terribly far off, but I can appreciate that experience.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, that's it, that's all.
Okay.
Your turn, Bob.
I hate to bring this subject up.
Oh.
Because we haven't talked about it all night, and I was really deliberating. But I have to, because I just want to make a clarification for folks that might be listening about the vote on December seventh for the ATVs. And I've gotten contacted by a lot of people that are still leery that our board will in fact not create an ordinance for ATVs if the vote is yes or if the vote is no. And I have pulled all the select board members, everyone I talked to, and everybody is in the same thinking that if the vote is no, then we will not create an ordinance for ATVs. We were gonna follow what the vote says. And, I mean, I'm serious, I've had at least ten, twelve people contact me asking me, you haven't, Tom, but a lot of people have. And I just want to make it very clear to people, we've all decided we're gonna follow what the vote is. That's what we wanted to get, as many people to decide on this as we could. And just to have it out there publicly, so everybody can, and rest assured that we're not gonna go against, even though it's a non-binding vote, and we can in fact authorize it if we want, and we won't.
Yeah, it is appreciated, and sure.
Okay. Yeah.
And Bob, this is Jeff Egan out in Zoom. That's why I say, thanks for the clarification, just because there was a little bit of like, well, if the vote's close, you know, it's still our purview, so I appreciate you clarifying that.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
I want to thank you back, and just reiterate that our institutional meeting at the Moyles Civic Center is not talking about ATVs, there is no general item about ATVs. It is not about ATVs, we will not be talking about ATVs.
We're gonna do, we're gonna do whack-a-mole if anybody.
I agree, I'm distressed.
Okay. All right, that's it. Do we have any old business? No old business? Any other business?
We're going to do Donnie Blake to DRB, or is that a future agenda?
Future agenda.
Future agenda, that's okay, that's what I step around for.
I'll make the motion major.
At most by Judy.
I'm second.
Second by Jeff. On favor, say aye.
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 Yay.
And now adjourned.
Thank you all.